Okay. So Ty, do you want to activate it?
Um, I believe we are already in the session.
Okay, great.
So, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the 12th County of Los Angeles Citizen Redistricting Commission Regular Public Meeting for 2021. Today is June 9th, 2021, and the time is 7:02 PM. We will now call the meeting to order. As a reminder to the public, this meeting is being recorded and livestreamed to youtube.com/lacountyredistricting. The link to the recording will also be posted and accessible through the Los Angeles County redistricting website. If at any time, any members of the public have any technical difficulties, please message me, Ty Lee, and we can work towards fixing the issue. As a reminder, for members of the public interested in making a comment, please click on the Q and A button on the Zoom toolbar and enter into the Q and A section the following information: A, that you are interested in making a public comment, B, your name, C, the organization you are affiliated with, if any, D, which agenda item you would like to make a public comment on. When you are called to make your public comment, you will be prompted to unmute your mic so you can speak. If you are participating via phone, press star nine to raise your hand. Once called upon, press star six to unmute and speak. Uh, I will now take the roll call. As a reminder, commissioner names will be called in a rotating alphabetical order by last name. Commissioners, please be prepared to unmute your mic and respond when your name is called. Commissioner Jean Franklin.
President.
Commissioner David Holtzman. Commissioner Mary Kenny. Co-chair Daniel Maeda.
Present.
Commissioner Mark Mendoza.
Present.
Commissioner Apollonia Morales.
Present.
Commissioner Nelson Obregon.
Present.
Commissioner Priscilla Orpinala Segura.
Present.
Commissioner Haile Soto.
Present.
Commissioner Sider Soto.
Present.
Commissioner Brian Stetcher.
Present.
Commissioner John Bento.
Present.
Co-chair Carolyn Williams.
Present.
Commissioner Dorina Wong.
Present.
Thank you. I will now turn the agenda over to co-chair Williams.
Thank you, Ty. Um, there are no additional items for, to be added to the agenda, so the agenda is approved. Next, we'll move to public comments. Uh, these are for, uh, comments for matters that are not on the agenda. Ty, do we have any public comments? I guess we need to open that up and see if there are people who'd like to speak.
And also, while he's opening it up for the public, we actually received two written public comments, um, and they are both posted on the CRC website for tonight's meeting.
And while we're waiting for, uh, the public commenters to indicate that they want to speak on non-agenda items, I'll just mention that the written comments that we did receive are very useful, so if you have not yet reviewed those, please do so. Uh, I know that some of those items that are discussed in those, uh, that written public comment will be taken up by some of the working groups, but I definitely commend you to, to read those.
Yeah, and I just want to add to that, that we appreciate those. And there was, uh, one particular item in the written public comments, regarding, um, a conflict in one of our meeting dates. We're going to ask our outreach, uh, working group to look at that and come back to the commission, so to look at how to resolve that.
Uh, before moving on to some of the public comments, I see Commissioner Holtzman has his hand up.
Uh, yes, I know we're allowed to ask, uh, follow-up questions to commenters or briefly react to comment, so I had a couple of brief reactions to those written public comments I wanted to share. Uh, first of all, uh, this is about the stuff from the People's Block. Uh, they're offering partnership, People's Block, and, uh, wants us to treat them as trusted messengers. Uh, our statutory mandate suggests that we can coordinate with community organizations, but I don't know about, uh, entering into formal partnerships or making any statements about how we, how much we trust them, no matter how much I trust them, and then, uh, I do trust those organizations. I'm also looking forward to learning more about this redistricting equity index that's mentioned. I did not get to, uh, follow the links. And, um, finally, on the point of, uh, having our meeting invitations reflect to the public more obviously, that we're looking for community of interest public testimony, uh, stay tuned for my working group report for a suggestion on that. Um, I think we have a similar, we're of a similar mind, the working group and, uh, People's Block, so thank you.
Uh, so we have a few public comments, uh, for the general, uh, commentary. So the public comment is open on item four. Uh, so we have Monica Marquez from the LA County League of Women Voters, uh, would like to make a request permission to address the commission on a non-agenda item. Um, Monica, you will be prompted by Zoom to unmute your mic. Uh, when you unmute your mic, you will have two minutes to make your public comment.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Monica Marquez. I am board member of the Los Angeles County League of Women Voters. The League is very grateful to the commission for providing us this time for comment. The CRC website is an important tool providing information and instruction to the public. After a careful review, the League of Women Voters believes that some updates would be very helpful. The website would benefit by including the definition of a community of interest and how to describe one. It should provide directly on exactly how a member of the public can provide into input to the commission, for example, oral versus written commentary, time limits, and whether the public can submit testimony directly to the commission via the website. It should provide information about maps and the availability of mapping software, and of course, instructions on how to use it. We do have a question. The public participation link on the button on the, on the site links to a signup form for a newsletter. Have any gone out and can we get a copy? And then also, we wonder if there could be a search box, making it easier for the public to find information using keywords. These deficiencies put the public at a distinct disadvantage in communicating with the commission. A review of the California Redistricting Commission website would be most helpful because it has lots of information for the public. And since there is currently no mapping tool on our county redistricting website, the commission should consider accepting maps created using the California State Mapping Tool. The League of Women Voters is concerned that many, that people may not feel confident or prepared to provide testimony to the commission because there is currently inadequate information on the site and no direct opportunity to submit its input. Robust participation by many types of communities is key to drawing boundaries that will fairly represent the wide range of needs and outlooks of our very diverse population. Thank you for your time and attention.
Uh, thank you. Uh, next, we have Chris Rowe, who, uh, has their hand up. Chris, if you are able to, can you please put in the Q and A, um, just for our records, your name and if you're associated with any organization? Um, so Chris, I will now, or Zoom will prompt you now to unmute yourself.
Hi, I'm Chris Rowe. I am not involved with any community organizations at this time. I am a former member of the West Hills Neighborhood Council. The West Hills, uh, community is at the far west end of the San Fernando Valley. And what is really important to me, I've spent a lot of time going to the street maps for the county and, and taking screenshots last night because the, uh, fifth district and third district literally divides, it's gerrymander down the middle of West Hills. And so, for example, West Hills, West San Fernando Valley, divided through there, and then the fifth district goes all the way up to the boundary with San Bernardino County. So what does West Hills have to do in common with the antelope and San, you know, all the way to San Bernardino County line? So what I want to make sure is I was not involved with LA County during redistricting. Last time I was involved with LA City and with the state, and so I appreciate this process. I left a meeting to come here tonight so that I can start engaging, learning how to use a mapping tool. And, um, I, I want you to be aware that I am involved with the state office, the Office of Environmental Health Hazard Assessment. So I was on their Cal Enviro screen. I see Commissioner Holtzman. Yes, he was present at that meeting in the breakout session for all of LA County that I was. I had no communication, I want you to know, with him, um, since that meeting or anything like that. But I just want you to know that I recognized he was broken in the same group that I was. So that, that tool has pollution burden scores as well as environmental justice scores. And that's one of the ways that I want to look at the, the county, but I want us to be contiguous, compact, communities of interest. So for example, when you draw the lines, I'd like to see a West San Fernando Valley district because I'm guessing there's probably 2 million people in the valley. And I think if you were to include some of the coastal communities going all the way out to Agoura, Westlake Village and in that area, and then sort of stop. Thank you.
Uh, next, we have Margot Riggs, League of Women Voters of LA County. Um, Margot, you will be prompted by Zoom, uh, to unmute. Uh, and then when you begin speaking, you have two minutes.
Good evening. I'm Margot Riggs, the second vice president for the League of Women Voters of Los Angeles County. Uh, and my portfolio is voter education and voter service. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to all of you this evening. The League of Women Voters is particularly interested in making sure that the residents of Los Angeles County have ample opportunity to present their communities of interest, also known as COIs, to the commission at the series of public hearings to be held in June, July, and August. In our perusal of the public hearing flyers and the CRC website, we are concerned that we did not find any mention of communities of interest or any guidelines for how to describe and define a community of interest. In contrast, the California CRC website has a detailed description in plain language. Further, on the LA County CRC website, there is a PowerPoint that specifically states that no public input will be taken. This should be corrected. Under the heading Summer Public Hearings, it states that input is important, but asks this question: What would the public like the CRC to consider in the redistricting effort? This statement does not suggest to the reader that a community of interest should be defined and described with boundaries and neighborhoods. In fact, communities of interest are not mentioned at all. The tab to submit a public comment to the commission does not mention communities of interest and how to create and submit a map or a detailed description of a community of interest. There should be clear instructions on the LA County CRC webpage on what a community of interest is and what types of criteria may be used to describe it. The LA County GIS mapping software or the Arc Bridge mapping software should be available on the website now so constituents can utilize this tool for creating their input on communities of interest. Also essential is a tutorial on how to use the mapping software, and the tutorial should be done in plain language so that people can understand it. I appreciate the fact that, um, all the different languages have been uploaded to the, uh, public website. Thank you.
Our next public comment is from Maria Skeleton, uh, president of the Democrats for Neighborhood Action. Uh, Maria, uh, you will be prompted by Zoom to unmute your mic, and when you begin speaking, you have two minutes, uh, to make your public comment.
Um, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes. Maria, I believe you're still muted.
Okay, now, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, don't nobody tell people that I don't know how to work the mic. Okay, that's our little secret. So, hi, my name is Maria Skeleton. Thank you for having this meeting. It's greatly appreciated. Um, I am the president of Democrats of Neighborhood Action, as well as president of my DLC, SEIU Local 1000, 725, which is in this area in the valley. I would like to know, when would you start back having your representatives come and speak about redistricting to different meetings? Thank you so much, and have a blessed evening.
Thank you. We currently have no other public comment.
Okay, thank you, Ty, and I want to thank, um, our speakers for their, um, their comments and their things that we're taking into consideration, so we appreciate that. Now we'll move to consent items. Co-chair Maeda.
Thank you, Co-chair Williams. Uh, for consent items, we have, uh, review and, uh, consideration, taking action to approve the minutes for two meetings. Uh, the first is the May 12th, 2021 regular meeting, uh, that has been now updated, uh, to reflect the, uh, brief description of one of the public commenter's comment. Are there, just do, does anybody else have any questions, changes, corrections to the May 12th, uh, meeting minutes? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to have those minutes approved.
I, uh, on this, you can, uh, for consent item, you can have one motion for both items. So if you wanted to check, uh, if there were any changes to May 26th, and, and then you could move both items and just have one roll call.
Okay, that, that's very helpful, thank you, colleague. Um, looking at the May 26th meeting minutes, uh, is there, are there any suggested changes, corrections, uh, comments on the May 26th meeting minutes?
Uh, yes, Co-chair Maeda, if I may. I just had a quick question. Um, for the May 26th meeting, I, um, arrived late. Uh, so I was just planning to, um, vote, tip steam from that vote for the minutes, uh, just because I wasn't there for the full meeting. Um, but, so I don't know, maybe we, to make it easier, just split up the, the roll call for each minute. Just for, to clear, uh, to make it clear for the record.
Okay, I think we, we can do it that way. Uh, so let's, uh, take them, uh, in, in order then. Uh, May 12th, 2021, is there a motion to approve those minutes as drafted?
I'll make a motion to approve the, the minutes for May 12th.
It's been moved, is it?
Second.
Co-chair Williams, seconds. Uh, Ty, can we have a rule on that?
Commissioners, please be prepared to unmute your mic and respond when your name is called. I will now take roll call. Commissioner David Holtzman.
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Mary Kenny.
Yes.
Co-chair Daniel Maeda.
Aye.
Commissioner Mark Mendoza.
Move for approval.
Commissioner Apollonia Morales.
Yes.
Commissioner Nelson Obregon.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Priscilla Orpinala Segura.
Yes.
Commissioner Haile Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Sider Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Brian Stetcher.
Aye.
Commissioner John Bento.
Yes.
Co-chair Carolyn Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Dorina Wong.
Yes.
Commissioner Jean Franklin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Ty. Uh, and now, is there a motion to approve the May 26th minutes, uh, as drafted?
I move to accept the May 26th minutes.
Uh, Commissioner Wong moves, and, uh, Commissioner Stetcher, seconds. Uh, any further question? Uh, Ty, why don't you take a roll on that, please?
Uh, again, commissioners, please be prepared to unmute your mic and respond when your name is called. Commissioner Mary Kenny.
Yes.
Co-chair Daniel Maeda.
Aye.
Commissioner Mark Mendoza.
Move for approval.
Commissioner Apollonia Morales.
Yes.
Commissioner Nelson Obregon.
Yes.
Commissioner Priscilla Orpinala Segura.
Abstain.
Commissioner Haile Soto.
Same.
Commissioner Sider Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Brian Stetcher.
Yes.
Commissioner John Bento.
Abstain.
Co-chair Carolyn Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Dorina Wong.
Yes.
Commissioner Jean Franklin.
Yes.
Commissioner David Holtzman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is, uh, action item six A. Um, and the primary purpose of our meeting today is to hear, uh, from another subject matter expert. Uh, the working group, Education Working Group, uh, the lead is Mark Mendoza, but, uh, he and, uh, John Bento, which was the other member of that group, have tasked me with, uh, introducing our speakers, so I will do so now. Professor Matt A. Barretta, Barretto is professor of political science and Chicana, Chicano, and Central American Studies at what has become known as the world's best public university, as well as co-founder of the research and polling firm BSP Research. You can read his full, very impressive resume at mattbarretto.com, and also there, on this slide here as part of it. But suffice it to say that Professor Barretto is an expert on polling, voting rights analysis, and voter behavior, especially but not limited to the Latino vote. The Education Working Group felt it would be useful to hear from Professor Barretto on voter polarization analysis. What is it and how might it affect the task that we have coming up for us? In this regard, Professor Barretto did do a study for the California CRC in the 2011 election cycle on, among other things, LA County voting patterns. As a matter of full disclosure, I think I should also mention that Professor Barretto also provided an analysis of voter demographics and polarization for former LA County Supervisor Gloria Molina in 2011. And he has been retained by Joe Biden, Hillary Clinton, and other Democrats on Latino voting, uh, voter polling and outreach. Uh, I think I should also further note that when the Education Working Group, uh, met with Professor Barretto to discuss his possible appearance for the commission, uh, he made some remarks that, out of the abundance of caution, we disclosed as an ex parte communication regarding a matter that might come before the commission per our bylaws. Um, and, uh, just as a reminder, you can read, uh, that disclosure and all disclosures that, uh, have been made on the redistricting LA County website. Finally, uh, they say in Twitterland, uh, retweets do not imply endorsement. Uh, and similarly, the fact that we are, we have invited Professor Barretto to address the commission on areas of his expertise, uh, for the record, does not and should not be taken as, uh, the commission's endorsement of everything that he shares with us tonight. Um, having said all of that, uh, we are very excited to hear from Professor Barretto and really looking forward to his, uh, presentation on voter polarization analysis. So take it away, Professor.
All right, thank you very much, uh, Co-chair Maeda. It's my pleasure to be here. I'm just going to go ahead and open up some slides and walk through a presentation. Uh, be happy to stop at any point, uh, and take your questions, or, uh, we can save those, uh, for the end. So you should see my slides now. Great. I'm going to go ahead and get started then. Um, so, uh, as was said in the introduction, um, I'm Matt Barretto. I'm a professor of political science and Chicano studies at UCLA. I also run the UCLA Voting Rights Project, uh, which is a co-convened project of the Luskin School of Public Affairs and the UCLA School of Law. Um, in the 2011 cycle, I was the, uh, independent expert hired by the State of California Independent Commission to do demographic and voter polarization analysis. I've done that probably in about, uh, three dozen, uh, federal and state, um, voting rights lawsuits. Uh, and so it is a methodology and a topic that I have a lot of experience with, and I'm happy to answer any questions here today. Um, so let me just, uh, give a bit of an overview on, uh, what we're talking about. Mostly, I mean, you can talk, uh, talking about how we, uh, need to understand and comply with, uh, the Federal Voting Rights Act of 1965. Uh, there's two components of the Federal Voting Rights Act that are most relevant. Uh, the most famous was Section Five, which was called the preclearance, uh, section that states or subdivisions that had a known history of discrimination had to preclear their plans, uh, here in California. Uh, that was three counties, Monterey, Yuba, and Kings County. Uh, but ultimately, the Supreme Court struck down the coverage formula to determine who was going to be covered in 2013 in a Shelby County decision. Uh, and so now we don't have, uh, a coverage formula. That is something that currently the Congress is debating and discussing whether or not there will be a new coverage formula. So Section Five preclearance still exists. It's just there's no coverage formula to say who is covered. So the second component of the Federal Voting Rights Act, uh, which, um, is most relevant today is Section Two. And that is the section that prohibits discrimination in any voting standard, practice, or procedure that results in the denial or abridgement of the right of any citizen to vote on account of their race, color, or membership in a language minority group, and that applies nationwide. Uh, and that specific provision was used here in Los Angeles County, uh, and decided in 1990 uh, in Garza versus LA County. It was a lawsuit against the LA County Board of Supervisors, and that created the first ever majority Latino district, uh, that was held by, um, Gloria Molina, um, after following the Garza decision. So I'm going to put up on the screen the full text, but I'm just going to draw your attention to a couple of key sections of what Section Two says. Uh, Section Two explains when there is this, uh, a violation of the Federal Voting Rights Act. And essentially, here in the middle, it says, "When members have less opportunity than other members to participate in the political process and elect representatives of their choice." And so that is essentially what we're looking for, is whether or not, uh, certain, um, folks in our county, um, because of the way district lines are drawn, have less opportunity to elect representatives of their choice. If that's the case, uh, the Voting Rights Act says that you are in violation. Specifically, what Section Two does is that it prohibits districts that use racial gerrymandering to dilute, uh, using the language of, of the act and of courts, to dilute the minority rights to have this meaningful opportunity to elect candidates of their choice. Uh, it has been used by members of all racial and ethnic groups in the United States. Uh, black, Latino, Asian-American, Pacific Islander, Native American, and white plaintiffs have used Section Two of the Voting Rights Act to challenge districting schemes that draw lines in a way, uh, that either pack, which means overly concentrate, or crack, which means to split apart that group's population. Um, our goal here, um, is to find the right balance and to create equitable districts that are fair, uh, and then to successfully defend those plans to any challenges. And so the job of the commission is to take this into account, to be aware of it, uh, and to try to limit, uh, the liability that could, uh, pop up because of Section Two violations. Uh, these words, packing and cracking, are common for those of us who study Voting Rights Act, uh, violations, uh, but they're not, uh, sort of household terms. And so I'm going to try to illustrate with an example, um, from a nearby, uh, population, what this might look like. So this is a racial, uh, heat map of Clark County, Nevada, where Las Vegas is. Uh, and the areas in highest density green are places that are over 90 or 95% Hispanic or Latino. Um, and then places that are highest density red are places that have very, very few Hispanic or Latino residents under 10%. And this is, uh, Central Las Vegas that you can see here in the middle of your map. So here's a possible five district scheme, and in this scenario, we would, excuse me, six, we would call this cracking. Here, the Latino population seen in, uh, the central and eastern part of Clark County, uh, appears split or cracked into multiple districts. There's a sizable section in, in District Five. There's some in Six. There's a bit in Two, um, and a bit in Three. Conversely, this map here is one that we might give an example of packing. That is, there is one very strong majority Latino district, uh, that is perhaps, um, looking at the numbers, it might be as high as 80% of the residents being Latino. And none of the adjacent districts around it have much of a Latino population in it to be able to, um, have an opportunity to elect candidates of their choice. Again, this would be called packing. Uh, perhaps what might be what we call the balanced district is that there is an opportunity to create two districts uh, in this county, uh, where each of those districts are still geographically compact and contiguous, um, but one in which the Latino population is neither packed nor cracked, uh, and it could achieve its optimal amount of influence. A map drawer can give consideration to race as long as one condition, uh, as, as not as the only condition. Uh, and historical conditions in voting behaviors must justify this, and so it is something that there does need to be prior research and analysis um, before, uh, the map drawer can go into that. So what are some of the considerations on drawing the lines? Well, first, of course, is to comply with the federal and state laws, uh, that govern, um, uh, districting. And here, we're going to be focusing on the federal laws, meaning, uh, the Voting Rights Act, uh, but what other, um, statutes have been laid out for this particular commission itself, of course. Uh, then you have, um, sort of the three Statutes have been laid out for this particular commission itself, of course. Uh, then you have um sort of the three Cs, compactness. Uh, that is, the district uh is geographically compact and stands together. Uh, contiguous, uh, that parts of it um are not separated from the other, that is altogether. Uh, competitiveness can be taken into account as a principle to try to, uh, if a commission desires. Um, yeah, to try to create districts that are more competitive uh for um voters to have a chance to to change uh who the commissioner is. Preservation of political subdivisions and preservation of communities of interest. And so as. Um, you draw the lines, and there was reference to this in the public comment. Um, it's impossible to avoid some communities getting split. Uh, when you're dividing a county of ten million into five, but it is something that should be uh taken into account. Uh, to attempt to preserve political subdivisions and to attempt to preserve communities of interest. Uh, there is a deference to the core of prior districts. Courts have ruled that um looking to the the current map as a starting point and attempting, if possible. Uh, to do that, uh, to avoid purposely uh pitting two incumbents against each other. Uh-huh, perhaps out of spite or for some other reason, that's something that of courts have said uh should not be done. Uh, unless there is a reason for doing that. There are certainly reasons uh for getting around some of these, but these are the general uh principles. We also need to think about the size of these districts, and we know that we are uh governed by one person, one vote. And that um there can only be a maximum population deviation of about ten percent uh for state uh level offices, and that would include county level offices. Uh, US House seats, I've struck out here because in this presentation, we don't need to concern ourselves with those. Uh, US House seats need to be almost as close as possible and equal population to one another, uh, deviating by almost none. Uh, and so there you will see splits of communities to try to get each size of those US House seats the same. Um, one decision that's important to think about is Laureos uh versus Cox, which indicated that population deviation, when it does exist. Um, cannot be used to discriminating, discriminate against voters based on race. That it is understandable that the five districts that you draw will have different population sizes. But you cannot purposefully try to over or underpopulate a district uh based on race. Uh, this is a decision that mostly applies to places where you're going to be drawing upwards of eighty districts, uh, such as state legislatures. Uh, and is a little bit less relevant in places where there are only five. You'll also think about uh what we call the Arlington Heights Factors, and these are tests. That will be taken into account to determine whether a government action was taken uh with discriminatory intent. And so if the district plans that ultimately come out are challenged, uh, these are the sorts of things that plaintiffs would be looking at. Uh, the impact of the official action, if it bears more heavily on one racial group or another. Uh, what was the historical background leading up to that? Was there a series of official actions taken by uh public officials? Um, that um purposely um uh impacted one group or another. Uh, the consequences of the events, the specific sequence, excuse me, of events leading up to that. And whether or not there were any normal departures or procedures. Uh, oftentimes we have seen in other instances, uh, public meetings getting canceled, uh, districts um being discussed. Um, out of quorum and things like that. Those are things that are referred to as Arlington Heights Factors. As well as any legislative or administrative history. And so. Uh, when, and so it's very important what the commission is doing right now and in holding meetings in in public and and being a citizens' commission. Uh, are things that um demonstrate the transparency. Uh, Arlington Heights Factors are are typically things to suggest that perhaps something. Uh, went awry along the process. So when can race be considered in redistricting? Well, we have this from a decision in nineteen ninety-three called Shaw versus Reno. Uh, that says redistricting where race is a predominant uh factor. Must be held to a standard of strict scrutiny under the law and the equal protection clause. However, um, bodies such as yourself can give consideration. They can be conscious of race. To ensure compliance with the VRA. So it is a uh a line that needs to be made aware. Uh, but should not go over too far in one way or the other. Uh, perhaps the most famous uh and guiding um lawsuit for us in this case is called the Jingles Test. This was a landmark case uh decided in nineteen eighty-six, Thornburg versus Jingles. In which the Supreme Court established what is now known as a three-pronged test. To assess whether or not minority vote dilution has occurred in a jurisdiction. The first is, is the minority group sufficiently large and geographically compact? That is, uh, not every numeric minority, um, perhaps regardless of how much discrimination they face. Would be able to achieve a district. And so the first question is a demographic analysis of the size. And the compactness of that group uh to determine if they meet what we call Jingles One. Uh, the second is, are those minority voters politically cohesive? Do they vote together? Do they have an agreed upon a candidate of choice? Would they elect a candidate of their choice if they were drawn into a district? And third, which is the other side of this coin, are they being blocked? Do the majority voters, the rest of the voters, vote in a way that usually defeats the minority's preferred candidate? So we need to get to the bottom of how different groups are voting. Uh, are a certain set of groups large enough to sustain a district? Do they vote in a cohesive uh pattern? And are other election results suggesting that the majority, the tho- those voters who are not in their group, voting to defeat their interest? The last and sometimes considered the fourth uh prong of the Jingles Test is one uh that came out in Johnson versus DeGrandy, a case out of Florida. Uh, related to the lack of proportionality. Uh, and essentially uh saying that if you already have proportional representation. Uh, if your group is fifty percent of a city and you already have fifty-one percent of the seats. Um, it then makes it very difficult uh to argue and push for the creation of a sixty percent or a sixth seat. Uh, on a city council or something like that. And so proportionality is something uh that weighs in the back of the mind of courts um in looking. Uh, the next thing that happened after uh and during the Jingles um case that was decided was during the nineteen eighty-two. Um, amendments to the Voting Rights Act and reauthorization of the Voting Rights Act. The court uh looked to something that was called the totality of circumstances, saying that you can't just look at the voting patterns. In a vacuum, in isolation, that uh the plaintiffs need to demonstrate and can demonstrate. That across the totality of circumstances, uh, there is less opportunity and um discrimination against minority groups. And I'm just gonna put these on the screen um quickly, not gonna go through all of them. Uh, there are things for um all of us to think about, uh, when we think about whether or not there is um a case. Uh, official discrimination with respect to voting, the extent to uh discriminatory voting procedures. Um, the candidate slating process that many places uh in the South and the Midwest used to use. Um, is there discrimination in education or other areas that might keep minorities from effectively participating? Are are can, are the campaigns in this community heavily racialized? Um, have minorities been elected to public office before from that part of of the community? Uh, and whether there is a lack of responsiveness uh to uh those minority groups uh and the policy. Of the supporting uh group or practice, the reason that this um specific um uh district drawn. Was tenuous, that it can't be justified, that it seems fishy essentially. The ones that usually get the most attention are the the historical discrimination. Um, that if there had been previous things, the court wants to be aware of those. Um, is there discrimination in other areas? That might hinder minority participation? So if there are extreme imbalances in educational opportunities or other uh reasons that that might i- impact. And then responsiveness, i- if it can be demonstrated that a certain part of a jurisdiction is just getting less responsiveness. From um the political office, from the governing office. Uh, that that is a reason to suggest that perhaps that part of town needs its own district, needs its own representative, because they're not getting uh the attention. Uh, they deserve. So those are some of the factors that come up in um. What is called the totality of circumstances. Let me return to talk about the Jingles Factors, because these are probably the most important uh things that we need to be familiar with. Uh, for the purposes of a racially polarized voting analysis. Uh, so the first is, uh, has to do with demographics. Uh, Jingles Factor One is, is the minority group sufficiently large and geographically compact? Can it create? A district? Is that population big enough to sustain a district? Uh, and you're gonna look at this through a number of different types of data. Uh, and this is part of uh what Co-Chair Maeda referred to, uh, some of my analysis I did back in twenty eleven for Supervisor Molina. Uh, was looking at the the demographics of the different parts of Los Angeles County, using census data from the decennial census. Uh, using Census ACS, that is the Annual American Community Survey, either their one-year or five-year average data. Or perhaps looking directly at the voter file of who the registered voters are. Uh, by either doing a surname analysis or using new advancements that are called B I S G. Uh, to try to get a sense of all of the racial and ethnic groups in a community to see if, are they of sufficient size to sustain a district? Assuming you have passed that hurdle, and you answer the question that yes, that group is of a sufficient size. Uh, you then go into Jingles Factors Two and Three, which are, as I said earlier, are really the same, uh, two different sides of the same coin. Minority voters are politically cohesive in supporting their candidate of choice, but majority voters, the rest of the voters, vote in a block. To usually defeat the minority preferred candidate's interests. So are these groups opposed to each other? Or is there general consensus? Well, this requires an analysis of voting patterns by race and ethnicity. The only way we can figure this is out is to figure out how people are voting. The question the courts will ask us is, is there evidence of quote racially polarized voting? That is the term that the courts have used um in determining these voting practices. So let me give you a couple of examples of that and try to define it um in um non-legal speak. So racially polarized voting exists when voters of different racial or ethnic groups. Exhibit different preferences. It's very, very uh basic, just that people are voting in different directions. And where it gets its name is it is that voters are voting in polar opposite directions rather than in coalition, that they are polarized. One group of voters is way over on one side of the scale, the other group of voters is way over on the other side, that they are polarized. And that what separates the voters is their racial or ethnic group status. Um, racially polarized voting does not mean that voters are racist. It just means that the voting patterns suggest that there is a pattern. By which uh parts of the county that have high numbers of one racial or ethnic group vote differently. And it is a scale. It is not an all or nothing issue. The bottom line, minority voters are voting in one way and majority voters are voting in another way. Is there a minority group who is not quite large enough? To ever win an election. Uh, and they systematically lose. This is oftentimes used in at-large city council contests. Where an entire city is elected, all five members of the city council are elected at-large citywide. And the entire city votes to determine who gets to be put on the city council. Uh, if your group accounts for only thirty-five, forty percent of the population. And the remainder of the population always votes against you. Try as you might, you will never get your candidate of choice elected, and the Voting Rights Act says that is evidence of vote dilution. That you have a preference, you're trying your hardest, but another group is blocking you. Uh, the analysis is about the individual voters within a jurisdiction. So even if the governing body is well-intentioned, the individual voters across the county or the city might behave in a way. That is blocking a certain group from ever having their person, their choice, make it on to the city council or county commission. Uh, racially polarized voting will absolutely vary in degree of intensity. It can be measured and quantified using um um some old, as well as some new political science techniques. That have been accepted and validated by uh the court. So how do we do this? Your vote is secret. Uh, when I get the voter file, which is public. It will tell me if you voted, but it never tells us how you voted or who you voted for. Uh, and so we use a pattern called ecological inference. We're going to infer. Voting patterns from ecological units, precincts. And I've done some work on this with some of my uh co-authors and and scholars at other universities across the US. Uh, to develop some statistical techniques and improve upon what is being used right now. Let me just give you an example to eyeball this of what this looks like. So here's another example from across the country. This is New York City. This is their two thousand and seventeen mayoral election. On the left side of your screen, you have the election results for Malatacus or de Blasio. Uh, de Blasio is shaded in the highest density um blue, uh, as the Democratic uh candidate for mayor in that election. On the right side of your screen, you see a race ethnicity map of New York City. Both of these plots are shaded by either census block groups or voting precincts. Little individual ecological units. What we can see here, without doing any statistical analysis, but just looking at the patterns. Is that the areas that have the highest density white population also have the highest density vote for the Republican candidate, Malatacus. And the areas that have the highest density minority population also correspond to the areas with the highest density uh vote for de Blasio. And in areas that appear to be a little bit more mixed, the vote seems to follow almost exactly to the patterns of race and ethnicity. This would be evidence that there is polarized voting, that minorities are voting in one way, whites are supporting another candidate. Let me show you how we do that today and what is some of the eventual uh data that you as commissioners might be looking at to understand what's happening in Los Angeles. So you'll be looking at a series of what we just call very basic X-Y scatter plots. Uh, where the Y-axis that's going up and down is measuring the vote that the candidate got. The X-axis here along the bottom is going to measure the race or ethnicity of the voters. Each dot that is gonna populate one of these charts is a precinct. And it's gonna tell you how that precinct voted. In this case, here's a precinct that's about thirteen percent Latino that voted about fifty-two percent for this candidate. So eventually you're gonna get plots like this. Um, that show you the the intensity of how many um whites, Latinos or Asian Americans or or African Americans are in a precinct. And how the vote came. And in this case, you can see there is a pattern. Uh, in this particular case in Yakima, Washington, as a precinct got more heavily Latino. Um, this candidate, Farias, got more votes in places where there were very, very few Latinos. This candidate got very few votes. Polarized voting does not exist in every election, and it is our job as analysts to understand elections and look at patterns. In this case, you don't see any clear pattern at all. As the percent minority here on the uh X-axis at the bottom. There does not appear to be any clear association with this candidate in this election. Uh, in fact, it appears to be a flat line. And so this would be an instance where there would be no section two liability. It doesn't appear that minorities and and whites are lining up on different sides of a candidate. Um, more commonly, what has been shown in areas where there is underrepresentation. Is that there does continue to be uh differences between how minorities and whites vote. Uh, here's an example from a primary election in California all the way back in two thousand and two. Uh, someone had asked me if there is racially polarized voting uh within the Democratic primary, or does partisanship trump that? Uh, and the answer was that there is, uh, in this case, only looking at Democratic voters. As there are in precincts where very, very few Latinos existed, this candidate Calderon got very few votes. But as the Latino vote went up, you see that this candidate's share went steadily up uh in a very, very clear uh pattern. So in order to do this analysis, you're going to need to know the race and ethnicity of the voters in the precincts, and that data comes to you from official county records. In former section five jurisdictions, what I started this presentation telling you about, um, that came from the voter file. On the voter file in places like Alabama or Georgia, uh, voters are required to indicate their race and ethnicity. In non-section five areas such as California, we have often used either surnames or census data. And now we use a process called B I S G, which I'll tell you just a tiny bit about. Um, prior accepted methods for estimating the race of the voter was to use census data. You could go and look at that neighborhood. Uh, down to the neighborhood block level. However, those aren't actual voters. That's just everyone who lives there from uh kids to adults to people who aren't registered. We can use surnames, and surnames are a very, very good improvement for understanding the actual voters. Uh, however, this is limited and is most um useful in instances, looking at Latino or Asian communities. Uh, but there's a new technique that many people are using, uh, and this is called B I S G. Uh, has been recently accepted in a section two decision, which it allows you to use both surnames. As well as census data in combination uh to get uh a more full uh estimate of this. I'm just gonna give you a very quick example of this. Uh, it's something that your expert will un- undoubtedly know about uh and consider uh in order to get a more. A holistic view beyond Latino and Asian. Um, every single voter on the voter file is first scored by surname. If you had a voter named Jackson. Um, they would have a fifty-three percent probability of being black, but a thirty-nine percent probability of being uh white. So it doesn't exactly narrow down whether or not this voter and that precinct, if there are voters named Jackson there, is high intensity black or high intensity white. The geo-coding comes in, which is the G in B I S G, and saying, let's look up the address of that. and saying, let's look up the address of that person and let's see where they live. If they live in this city block, which is eighty-five percent black and only five percent white, we can reassign, again, just a probability estimate that perhaps this voter is a high probability of being African American. However, if they lived over in this city block, that exact same voter, if they lived here in this ninety percent white city block, we would change the probability. And so it gives us the ability by not only accounting for surnames, but also accounting for your geography to have a fuller understanding of the of the patterns. So once you have that sort of data in, you then take the election results. You're going to get those election results from your Secretary of State or County Registrar, and you're going to merge them together with those patterns. Remember that map of New York City that I showed? It had the racial and ethnic demographics, and it had the voting patterns. This is called ecological inference. We're using ecological units to infer voting patterns. And it's going to spit out some results by race and ethnicity that look like this. So on this panel, it has an estimate of how white voters voted in this election. And they had a eighty-one percent preference for candidate A and an eighteen percent preference for candidate B. Minority voters, on the other hand, had a seventy-three percent preference for candidate B, and then only an eighteen percent preference for candidate A. So your statistical analysis would give you a sense for every election you analyze. If minority voters, and this data I'm showing you comes from a real voting rights lawsuit, a Section Two lawsuit, and this is real data, whether or not minority candidates are attempting to vote one way, but white voters, who perhaps are a majority, are blocking them in voting another way. If these bars were all near, if these charts were all near that fifty percent line and they overlapped each other, we would say there's no clear pattern and there is no vote dilution taking place. So you'll have evidence like this in every single instance.
Could you please go over that one more time?
Yes, absolutely.
And discuss discuss the color coding a little more clearly. I just wasn't able to follow it at your speed.
Yes, apologies, Commissioner. So you're going to get the precinct data and the racial estimates. From there, you're essentially going to do a regression analysis to see if there is a pattern or a correlation. It will then spit out a plot, a chart that looks like this. And what this is telling us is that candidate A, which is coded in blue, for white voters, it is estimated that eighty-one percent of white voters voted for candidate A, and that eighteen percent of white voters voted for candidate B, which is shaded in orange. It will give you a similar plot for a minority group, either individual minority groups or a combined non-white group. And what this analysis suggested that is in this jurisdiction, which was in the East Coast, minorities voted at about seventy-four percent, seventy-three point nine, for the candidate B, which is shaded in orange. So you see that the two panels are transposed. The orange candidate is on the right side, high preference for minorities. But that candidate that minorities were giving seventy-four percent to only won about eighteen percent of the white vote. White voters gave eighty-one point seven percent of their vote there. So those are just, you know, to to sort of use just as an illustration. I'm not putting real candidate names in here. I think that the first time I presented this, it was still part of an appeals process in a lawsuit, which has now been settled.
And do we need to attend to or think about the width of those spikes, which are also very different?
Yes, and so the width of those is essentially the confidence range around that estimate. The mu in there is the estimate, the midpoint. And so it's estimating, for example, on the right side of the screen and could go down a sort of a rabbit hole of technical sort of statistical analysis, which would happen in a court, that the minority voters, that that bar appears to be wider, meaning that there's a larger confidence band around the estimate. Part of that is driven by the fact that minority voters are smaller in size. But also, it could be that there is slightly more range, that their estimate might range. And your your output that your expert will give you will say seventy-three plus or minus seven. Whereas for whites, you can see there is a very, very tight estimate. It suggests that they were quite certain at the eighty-one and eighteen point. So all of this and down the road, there will be a very in-depth sort of statistical analysis that you'll have to have and discuss with your expert.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
No problem. So the last thing that I want to leave you with is just a little bit of a reflection on how this might apply locally here. And so this is what Los Angeles County looked like in 2019, according to the ACS from last year of a year ago, that it had a population of just over ten million. That would mean that your job is to put roughly two million people in each of the five districts. And they would be based on total population. The Los Angeles is currently forty-nine percent Latino, and that would be about four point eight, four point nine million residents. It is about twenty-six percent white, non-Hispanic. That would be two point six million residents. Is it about sixteen percent AAPI? And that would be about one point six million residents and about nine percent black and just under a million, nine hundred thousand residents. So a quite diverse county, as we all are familiar with, one of the most diverse counties and the largest county in the United States. You would then be looking at maps that look like something like this. This is a racial plot of census block groups in Los Angeles County from the 2019 ACS. This comes from the five-year average, taken from the public website Social Explorer, which anyone can go to and play around with. And I created this map just before this presentation in about thirty minutes. So it's a very, very useful tool. You can go and hone in and zoom in on different communities. And this shows you, you know, those are issues of compactness, of size, et cetera. And so these are the sorts of things that, you know, people will be looking at when they're thinking about where there are communities of interest, whether or not there is proportionality and how districts might be drawn and where districts may be drawn. They should not be the predominant consideration. But if plaintiffs make a successful Section Two challenge, the court will then let race be a predominant consideration in order to remedy what they have found is a harm. So it is something that we could be conscious of, but should not be a predominant consideration in drawing the maps. Finally, what are the next steps? Well, in my opinion, identifying a VRA experienced counsel, someone who has been through the paces and tried voting rights cases on both the plaintiff's and defendant's side, identifying your polarized voting analysis expert, working with your map drawers and demographers, who will be in regular dialogue with your VRA counsel and your political science expert, and then drawing maps that support communities of interest and avoid minority vote dilution. That is the charge in order to stay compliant with the Federal Voting Rights Act at least. All right. I know that was a lot of information. Thanks for inviting me, and I will turn off my share and if there's time, take any additional questions.
Thank you, Professor Barretto. It was very, very helpful. We do have some questions that Commissioner Vento and Commissioner Mendoza are, I think, queued up to ask. And then I think we'll take public comment and then have a round or so of commissioners' questions as well.
So can I just say something? Based on the list of questions that I had, I think Matt pretty much hit the ball out of the park on this one, Matt. So I mean, honestly, I think you really covered everything. My suggestion would be, Dan, is to just allow the other commissioners to ask some questions. I will kind of go through those other questions that I had preset, but I'm pretty much sure that he addressed everything we were looking for, at least from our meeting yesterday and over the weekend. So why don't we proceed with the commissioners first, and then there's something coming up I will ask or mark.
Commissioner Mendoza, that's, you're good with that approach as well?
I concur with what John said. Thank you.
Why don't we then pause and take public comment then on this matter, then we'll go with the commissioners' questions? Ty, is there a public comment?
So public comment is open on item six A. So we have one question from Alejandro Ramirez. She asks, good evening. While I understand the public may not be allowed to ask the presenters questions, really appreciate Matt Barretto's presentation and am wondering his opinion on coalition districts.
Yeah, thank you for that question. This is a growing area of interest within Voting Rights Act litigation as well as research by political scientists. Is there a claim that can be made on behalf of a coalition of groups? Or does the claim need to be made on behalf of a single racial group? And most research is evolving to suggest that there is such a thing as coalitions and coalition interests. But it needs to be informed by the data. And a recent case that I participated in in New York was brought on behalf of the NAACP, on behalf of African Americans and Hispanic Americans in a school board in New York. And as a part of that, we had to show, as political scientists, that those groups voted in coalition together. So it is very much based on the data. If the data suggests there is a coalition, the courts are open to those groups being in coalition together. But it requires that analysis and, you know, understanding of the the local nuances.
Ty, is there any other public comment?
We have one from Chris Rowe. Appreciate the presentation. I wish we could see slide thirty-seven again. That shows the San Fernando Valley and why you would want to make that an area that is contiguous, compact, and a community of interest, since there is a large minority population in it.
I don't know if there's any follow-up action. I think the commission has the map, and as I said, the, you know, the map is something that anyone can find on Social Explorer and and look at, and that is certainly one of the factors, you know, that will be looked at is, you know, those where those communities lie. I will say it's a very challenging job that you have before you because you are dividing ten million people up into five districts. And at some point, there is a boundary. There is a boundary that will cut through something. And so the goal is to minimize splitting of political subdivisions, but recognizing that sometimes those are unavoidable. And so and so those are, you know, those are considerations.
And I do I do see Chris Rowe's hand up, but I'm unsure if, Chris, if you would like to make a comment, please do put it in the Q and A so that we have it on the record. But I don't see any other public comments. Coach, your Maeda, how would you like to proceed?
Let's close public comment, and maybe what we should do is, Ty, if you would just, you know, go around the commission, just ask each of us individually whether we have a question or comment we want to make. People can feel free to pass, or they can make their comment or ask their question.
So commissioners, I will now call on your name in a rotating alphabetical order, just to ensure each commissioner has the opportunity to make a comment. If you do not wish to make a comment for this round, just please in the key so and we will just move on to the next commissioner. So again, please be prepared to unmute your mic and respond when your name is called. Coach, your Daniel Maeda.
Professor Barretto, thank you very much. It's very, very helpful. I have a question about one part that you mentioned on one of your slides about how we are not to intentionally pit one incumbent against another. That is not within our statutory guidelines, that that concept. And I'm wondering, it seems like the only way we would be able to do that is if we actually collected the data where the current incumbents live. So we would know to, you know, avoid putting two together. But is that something that we're required to do in your view?
No, these are, you know, the first, the first and main rule is to follow federal principles, which means the Federal Voting Rights Act, and then your local principles that the that govern this body. In in some cases, those are state guidelines if we're talking about a city council or a county that doesn't have an independent commission. They may be drawing their lines themselves, as Los Angeles used to do. And so these are all principles of redistricting is the way we look at them, things that perhaps courts have weighed in on before. If there were attempts to, you know, sort of purposefully try to, you know, hurt incumbents who were otherwise protected by some other way. But those are not, none of those are, you know, etched in stone requirement other than following the Voting Rights Act and following the statutes that that govern your commission.
Thank you.
Next, we have Commissioner Mark Mendoza.
Yes, Professor Barretto, thank you so much. Very educational. I learned quite a bit here. Thank you so much for donating your time. No, no additional question.
Commissioner Apollonia Morales.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I just had a question in terms of how ecological inference, how do you define ecological, just once more, so I can, you know, things are going a little quick.
Yeah, and that's a term that is definitely not a household term in any way. And so it's, it just means an ecological unit, like an actual physical geographic unit. And in this case, we're using voting precincts. So in your analysis, if you can envision a data set, it would have every single voting precinct in Los Angeles. There's about five thousand of them. And it would tell you how that precinct voted. And then separately, you would know what the race and ethnicity of the voters were. And so you would do an analysis across those to try to infer how different groups are voting by looking at the variation. And that is where those X Y scatter plots will come in. You're trying to infer based on the variation in those ecological units what the true patterns are.
Next, we have Commissioner Nelson Oliva.
No, but thank you, Dr. Barretto. That was really very informative, and I'm glad we were here to listen to this. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Commissioner Priscilla Orbán Alasagura.
I just want to thank Professor Barretto for making the information very easy to understand and, you know, the time limit that we had. So thank you for that.
Commissioner Haile Soto.
I'd like to thank Professor Barretto for making the presentation. It was very informative. I have no further comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Siders Soto.
Thank you. My question was on ecological units, so you've already answered it. Thank you for that and for your time today.
Commissioner Brian Stetcher.
I have two questions. I think the first one's simple, and that is, when you say the first Gingles test is that there has to be, a minority population has to be sufficiently large and geographically compact. Could you say more about what sufficient means in terms of size?
Yes, good question. There is no guaranteed bright line for that. It is a little bit of the proof is in the pudding. So the final piece of analysis that will be requested by the courts of the plaintiffs is that the district that they are proposing to challenge you with, their district, actually performs. So the minority population might achieve fifty-five percent of that district, but perhaps there's not enough cohesiveness that it would never actually elect their candidate of choice. Conversely, the minority population might only be forty-three percent of that district, but because of some coalition politics, they are able to actually get their candidate elected. And so rather than having a specific bright line, that minority population must be proven that it can have a chance to meaningfully elect candidates of choice if put into a district. And so the very last thing we do when we're on the plaintiff's side is we take the alternative map, we rerun all the elections, we reconstitute the precincts, and say if these precincts were grouped together, this candidate would have in fact won. And it's called a performance analysis or a reconstituted precinct analysis. And that helps guide, you know, things that that tell you if you're if you're somewhere around that 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 number.
Great. My second question goes a little bit beyond what you talked about. When we heard from people at the county office about the 2010 redistricting, they said that they began by identifying what their basic
unit was going to be, their their fundamental redistricting unit that they would combine when they looked at alternative maps. And it wasn't a block or a block group. It was a kind of a amalgamation. In the most cases, the smallest unit was a city, and within Los Angeles, it was kind of neighborhoods adjusted somewhat. From the V R Voting Rights Act point of view, is our choice of the how important is our choice of the smallest unit? And is there a unit that you think we would be best served to use as we do map drawing?
Well, the drawing of the maps themselves will be informed by blocks when the decennial census comes out at the block level, block groups, voting precincts. And so these very small ecological units, those are going to underlie the map. And those are going to be the ways when the map boundary is is drawn is really what is behind the scenes. I think what you're asking about is some of the political decisions that are being made at the beginning, which is, you know, looking at a sizable city like, let's say, Long Beach and deciding, do we want to keep that whole? It's very large. Or is there a reason why there are actually, let's say, two communities within Long Beach? Perhaps this one on, you know, the south side or the north side or the east? And that there is a a reason informed by the Voting Rights Act, why it might make more sense to then get down to a fine grain level and look with inside political subdivision. But keeping political subdivisions together is an important principle and is one of the agreed upon principles. And so I think that's a good starting point. But sometimes the data will take you to a place where you do need to split a political subdivision if there are different communities of interest there.
Thank you.
Commissioner John Vento.
Thank you so much, Matt. I really do appreciate this presentation. One thing I thought was helpful when we spoke to you yesterday is maybe you could cut in, lighten the commissions about politically cohesive. Specifically, the example you used yesterday, when you're talking about when the groups vote like fifty percent versus seventy percent and so forth. If you could enlighten us on that again.
Yeah, so with with any of these things in the Jingles test, we're going to have to determine not by a secret number that if it crosses a threshold, but what is the degree? And so sometimes you could say, well, this group is politically cohesive because they consistently vote fifty five percent one way and forty five percent the other way. That would be on the lower end of cohesiveness. Yes, there is some cohesiveness there. There's a fifty five percent majority or something. But typically, when we're looking at data, we might see things that are much more closer to the seventy percent range. And in some communities, it wouldn't surprise any of us if we went in and found some precincts here in Los Angeles where some candidates win eighty or ninety percent of the vote. Those are highly cohesive areas. And so those are things that we're going to be looking at on a sliding scale. And will be important in knowing whether or not to a previous question, a a district that you draw will support a community of interest. Does it? Is there a sense of cohesiveness there that will produce a candidate that that community is looking for? So it's a it's a sliding scale.
Thank you so much. I really do appreciate your time and effort.
Coach Carolyn Williams.
Yes, I do have a couple of questions. I think I'm I won't say confused, I just have, I wonder how, what's the relationship between these two? And I really appreciate your presentation. Really got got my my head to thinking and, you know, how are we going to handle this? When you showed the population of LA County, what sticks out is the population, just the number of people there. But when we start to look at voter polarization, do we do, first, we start, I guess, density of population. And then we go down into where we start to look at number of voters. So what happens if there is sort of a the the number of voters is a lot smaller than the population? And at what point do we start to look at coalition politics? Because I think that should, that will probably come into play. So, you know, what's what's the relationship when we start to to say there may be not just one pattern here? Or one ethnic group, there may be several that are voting in for the same candidate. So can you explain a little bit more about that?
Yes, definitely. So the the first thing is the the districts themselves are going to be based on total population, including, you know, children, non citizens and non registered voters. And each one will have roughly two, you know, two million, hopefully as close as possible that is feasible. But then to your point, you know, places that have a high percentage of people under eighteen that have a high percentage of non citizens or have a high percentages of citizens who don't vote, they may only have two hundred thousand voters who show up on Election Day, even though two million people live in the district. So as you're drawing a district, if you believe that there is a Voting Rights Act claim that could be made somewhere, you need to draw a district that would support that coalition group so that if the total population looked really good, and this happens a lot, and it is a way to dilute the vote, you'll say, well, we can draw a district that is fifty five percent Latino. And this happens a lot in Texas, where there's partisan districting of their state legislature. We could draw a district that is fifty five percent Latino. We believe that will satisfy the Voting Rights Act. It will be hard for us to be challenged because we created a majority Latino district. But because of the very young age and lower rates of citizenship, that district might only be thirty five percent Latino among the voters. And so the performance analysis that we would come in and do would say, you can't draw that district, that district will not actually meet the standards of being able to perform for that community. You've kind of tried to fool us by thinking you drew a district, but it won't. And that's where the coalitions will come into effect. Now, it could be that if there are other like minded minority groups in that district, that it would perform. That it could be that if these two groups in combination vote together enough, they regularly will put together a coalition of voters to get to that fifty sixty percent threshold. And so it is looking at both those populations, but for sure, you're going to want to ask your expert to examine the number of estimated voters in that district to see if you believe that that district can quote perform. That's the question you'll ask them. Do you think that district will perform? Not just does it look good on paper, but will it perform? And is it actually a voting rights district?
Commissioner Dorena Wong.
Oh, yes, thank you. Yeah, this is really, this is really informative and educational, and thank you for making the the Voting Rights Act and especially racially polarized voting a little more straightforward. I I just, I do have a couple of questions. So when you were showing that in that New York example, and you were showing minority votes versus white votes, those minority votes were all was a whole conglomeration of minorities, right? So in in other words, that was like a coalition, just a coalition district in a sense, correct?
Yes, that's correct. In the case that we just got out of in in New York in the school board, it was called East Ramapo School District. And you can look up, it was just decided last year. That was, those analyses, we did analyses to focus on individual Latino voters, how they voted, African Americans. But the districts were drawn in coalition of both of those groups together and showing that they in these local school board elections were in fact voting in coalition.
So that does kind of support the idea of if we had districts and there were like African American Latinos or Asians and Latinos, and they voted similarly, they could be in a if we drew a district where included both of them and showed the racial racialized voting, that would be kind of supported.
You're always going to go where the data takes you. And so, you know, this example in the local school board in New York definitely showed that. There are some instances where at the local level, non white racial minorities don't vote in coalition together. And so the analysis is your your polarized voting expert will look at those local level patterns and look at lots of elections, not just one. The Voting Rights Act will say you can have one election that doesn't match the patterns. Okay, it it wants you to look at, you know, ten elections. What is the general mood in this community? Are these groups voting together or are they, you know, butting heads?
That'd be challenging. It's not a consistent pattern, but and and do you ever try to get it, this may not be relevant because our districts are so large, but kind of try to get to disaggregated data, like disaggregated Asian data or, you know, to see how smaller populations might be voting?
Yes, that's that's done pretty regularly. Typically, in terms of numbers, and to meet that first question of is the group of sufficient size and geographically compact, Asian Americans are identified together. But using surname lists as well as census data, a lot of people have done that sort of sub analysis to determine if in fact this is a candidate supported by Asian Americans in general, or perhaps that candidate is really only supported by Chinese Americans, Korean Americans, Filipino, etc. So far, the 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 general academic literature suggests that there is fairly decent coalition politics. But of course, sometimes, again, at city council, local levels, you know, it's not surprising that each community is hoping to see someone from their own community elected. And so sometimes in primaries, we do see, you know, some differences, but it it you you need to let the data in each community inform those decisions.
And I guess since there's been so many tools or or analysis, like the B I S G and the surnames, that data is more kind of reliable than I think what they used to use, like exit polling or, you know, surveys and samples of how people voted.
Most of the Voting Rights challenges that I'm familiar with will use this exact type of ecological data. If you had a lot of local, high quality exit polling on county commissioner races in LA County, that is something that the expert could rely on and could look at if it if it helped. But it would need to be localized down to different regions within LA County so that you could look at those patterns. And oftentimes, that kind of data doesn't exist. We usually have statewide looks at things, but not good local level exit polling.
And just my my last question is that, you know, your performance analysis, you say that our racial racially polarized expert voter expert would compare the maps to see if the submitted maps, you know, were better at addressing some of those issues. So it would be that expert as opposed to the demographer that would be doing that analysis?
Depending on how the data comes in, probably your map drawer, your demographer will also have the ability to join voting precincts into their file, and they could reconstitute those for you. Typically, it's something that I do when I'm an expert, but oftentimes the map drawer does do it. And so between those two, you just want them in in discussion. I don't mean to say that you will expect them to rerun this on every single map that's drawn. It's when you think you need to potentially draw a district to avoid a section two lawsuit, you want to make sure the district's going to work. Because if you draw a district that doesn't work, you will be accused of vote dilution. That it looks like this is a really good district, let's say, in this example for Asian Americans, and it looks like you got the numbers up that look good. But if they're never able to come together and outvote the opposition, then you've essentially put them all together in a district where they're destined to lose. So that performance analysis comes at the very end just to sort of understand. And it doesn't have to be they're going to win a hundred out of a hundred elections. The question is usually, do they have a meaningful opportunity to elect a candidate of choice?
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Jean Franklin.
Yes, thank you for this excellent presentation. I just have a a question. The five districts that we have now, there are overlaps. You know, for example, Long Beach consists of two districts and there is another district that consists maybe of three districts and so forth. What would you recommend? How we can begin to tackle that in a sense? And how we draw the boundaries, looking at the census data and the B I S G and so forth and so on? Because we we really, you you indicated that we should avoid two two incumbents in the same district, in a sense. I hope my my question is making sense because we we really do have an insurmountable task before us, looking at all of the data, all of the analysis that we need to look at. And another question that I have as well is minority voters, they're not a monolith. Okay, so you might have Latino voters, I mean, Latino residents in a certain area. But because of coalition politics, that's making an impact. But understanding that they're not a monolith. But how do we, how do we look at that in a sense, using understanding coalition politics and educating the community? That's my questions.
Okay, thank you. Let me start with the first. Those are both great questions. The first, let me just give you a little bit of my, you know, opinion. And this is all of your own inputs and opinions, you know, should come into this. This is not any sort of legal advice or anything like that. I think Los Angeles County has been stuck in its district scheme because of the lack of changes that have been made since the Garza decision. And that Latino district, the court said, is protected, that at the time, there had never been a Latino district in Los Angeles, despite the large population. And future attempts at redistricting just continued what I call the Garza district. It has really been unchanged since nineteen ninety. And I think you have an opportunity to look at Los Angeles County with a fresh set of eyes and say, what does Los Angeles County look like today in twenty twenty, twenty twenty one now? And where are the communities of interest? So much has changed over those thirty years since the Garza decision. You still have to be cognizant of first and foremost, following the Federal Voting Rights Act, and then your statutes that have been given to you specifically for this. Deference to the core district of old districts is one of the various redistricting standards, but you're not required to just keep the exact districts and tinker with the boundaries on the edge. You can look at the county with a fresh set of eyes and say, where do the districts actually belong? And so I would encourage you to do that. You might result on a map that looks a lot like our current map. But you might come up with some better ideas, and you're perfectly entitled to do that, to sort of reimagine what we look at. That was my, you know, I was public about this. That was my criticism in two thousand and eleven was I thought there was an opportunity to, you know, reshift boundaries around and look at at new racial patterns across the county and not be stuck to the to the Garza map, which I I feel they were a little bit too similar to back in two thousand and eleven. So I think you can do that. That will include things like thinking about which cities should be split, which cities shouldn't. Where are there more communities of interest? Is there a coastal community of interest? Is there a high desert community of interest? Those are all questions. There's not a set answer for that, but those are all really important things. I think that should be part of the debate. To your second question, the data will tell you the answer to that. And so, as I said, Commissioner Vento asked this question earlier. In some cases, you're right. We will find Asian, Latino, black or white neighborhoods that vote fifty fifty, that vote fifty five forty five. In other parts of the county, you will find neighborhoods that vote ninety ten, that there really are a monolith. Okay, the data will tell you that. And so our analysis and your analysis should never assume that going in. You should let the voting patterns from previous about a decade of previous election data tell you whether or not this particular community is more cohesive, that this community over here is fractured, and that that's not a bad thing for the community to be fractured. Maybe they have very diverse opinions. But the voting data will tell you that.
Commissioner David Holtzman.
All right.
All right, uh Professor Barretto, I am a UCLA Law grad. Nice to see you. Um, a few quick questions. First question, how much work have you done on the defense side? Because that's the side we'll be on if there's a lawsuit.
Um, well, first of all, I think I'm not eligible to work with you guys because of the way the structure has been written. Um, anyone who has ever done any uh consulting uh over the last ten years, um, so I would be ruled out. But I was the expert for the state of California. We got sued three times in twenty eleven. And um, so I had to work with them in defending those. Uh, I have been on the defense side in a couple of different counties in uh Texas, uh Dallas County and Harris County and some others. Uh, and so I it just sort of depends, I guess, on um, you know, whi- which side is is uh calling. I would say I have been more commonly on the plaintiff's side.
Alright, thanks. Um, so, but just to be clear, it's really only the gingles, jingles, however you're supposed to say it, factor number two that requires racially polarized voting analysis, right?
Uh, two and three. Three is really just the opposite of two.
So 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 three, you you have to do it for two, but then three becomes sort of an outgrowth of two.
That's right. So both three are answered at the same time.
Yeah, okay. That one, alright, um, so um, what counts as a race?
Well, these are defined by federal law, and so it's what's in the the statute. You could just look it up and see. Um, the the bigger question is jingles one, is the group of uh sufficient size and geographically compact, but um this would be based on existing federal law.
So where would we find a list of what's called a race under federal law or?
Well, the the uh Voting Rights Act uh outlines um what they're talking about, and then there's many, many subsequent decisions. Uh, where they talk about the different groups um that have uh that have used section two uh to challenge. And I referenced, you know, um groups in in the talk has been used by pretty much every racial or ethnic group in the United States.
That gets to my next question. Uh, you use the word ethnicity, but the the section of law you showed on the screen doesn't use the word ethnicity. Um, so my question is if there's a legitimate reason to be using that word in the context of Voting Rights Act compliance, uh what does it mean, ethnicity?
Uh, we use it interchangeably just as social scientists, but the act calls about race, national origin, language minorities uh and others. And so some of those national origin or language minorities might commonly be referred to as ethnicities and uh, those are all sections that are in the Voting Rights Act.
Okay. Uh, to look at those carefully, I I I'd love to find a list of what counts as a race, but maybe that's unclear because some courts count things, some things in some courts don't. Uh, would that be just to follow up with that? Is that true?
I think it's fairly, has been fairly uh decided uh by courts. I don't think there's a lot of ambiguity. I think there are uh different groups, protected classes, as courts have called them, uh which um have used the Voting Rights Act in different regions, you know, and so in some regions, there are a lot of cases on behalf of American Indians. Some regions, there is a lot of cases on behalf of um Hispanic Latinos. Um, but again, the 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 groups are all defined by federal law and and uh court decisions.
And so we know uh Asian Americans is a large catchall term and for a very heterogeneous group, could a subset of Asian Americans count as a race?
Um, well, they, I think they would be able to bring a case if there was a place, let's um imagine Daly City, California up north has an extremely large uh and concentrated Filipino population. Um, there are other uh Asian American groups there as well in Daly City, but very, very large Filipino population. Um, they might bring a uh Voting Rights Act claim if they felt their vote was being diluted. Um, but they would probably bring that claim, you know, as a um uh as a group of Asian Americans, but it it would be possible to bring those um, you know, under under the Voting Rights Act uh as a group that that was of sufficient size and felt their vote was being diluted.
Uh, I was just hoping we'd have a checklist that we could go down to consider. Last thing is, I just want to clarify, picking up on what the Coach here Maeda was saying. Um, that the slide you showed with things that are historically done in redistricting that are okay um are um not required things, but they're allowed to be done unless the statute you're working on or you're working under under prohibits numbers or says otherwise. But is that right?
Yeah, I think I tried to describe them as principles or guidelines. Uh, really, the the only things that are set in stone are uh must must follow federal law. Uh, you know, you you can't deviate more than ten percent. Um, one person, one vote. Um, so any any sort of established federal uh law or case law. And then, of course, your specific statutes that you're given.
But but principles and guidelines can be seen as required. Um, I I I I think it's clear that um we don't have to follow each of those bullet points, especially uh the one that's prohibited for us. We're not allowed to consider incumbent addresses. And uh, since we're in an independent commission now, I think that uh raises new principles and new circumstances. Uh, so I really particularly liked what you said about LA having been being stuck in district patterns, and it might be time for us to take a fresh look with a fresh set of eyes, as you put it. Uh, thank you for that. Um, because I've been suggesting that one way to help us with the Voting Rights Act would be to unmoor us from the past by starting with uh a completely clean slate and not considering the existing district map at all. So uh I I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
All right, well, good luck. You've you've got a challenge on your hand, but it's a it's a uh important, important one, and and I think there's nothing wrong with, you know, uh, starting, starting with a fresh set of eyes.
And then we have Commissioner Mary Kent.
I have no questions.
Uh, Coach Ramayetta, that finishes the round.
Great. I think we've uh imposed uh sufficiently on Professor Barretto. Thank you so much. I I you've heard the comments from the commissioners. I think this is we we all agree this has been extremely helpful. Uh, so we really do appreciate your time and your guidance.
Sure thing. Thank you. My pleasure. Thanks for inviting me and and good luck with your work.
Thank you very much. Have a good dinner, or you can stick around if you'd like. Um, okay, uh, moving on to uh action item six uh B uh overview of the upcoming public hearings, and I think we're gonna get uh some uh ideas from uh our our executive director on uh what we're, what we can expect and how we can best prepare.
Yes, so just a couple of quick updates. Uh, we have prepared a press release that has gone out to over seven hundred media outlets, but I had a lot returned, so it's about five hundred. Um, we have completed flyers um to promote the um workshops, and they've been prepared in the twelve threshold languages. Um, they're very specific about zip codes. I'm gonna take a second and and just show you where they are currently posted. Um, and all of this, we're gonna start promoting next week as part of an outreach toolkit. Um, in terms of outreach, last week, we did send out over seven, seven thousand five hundred emails. Um, I mentioned the press release. We now have Los Angeles Community College District that has said they would help get the word out. Um, I've been talking to Dunn to get the word out to the neighborhood councils in Los Angeles City. Um, I've reached out to the executive director in Long Beach, um CRC, and he's going to help promote the public hearing that will be occurring down there. And I'm told by the executive office at the county departments will be probably mo- um notified um tomorrow about, again, promoting this across the various departments. Um, I've reached specifically the Department of Public Social Services. It serve about forty percent of L A County, and they too are gonna send out our promotional materials. I'm in conversation with SCAG, um Southern California Association of Government to see how we can help engage them in reaching the various cities. Um, I also have emailed the COGS, but have not heard back from any of them. Um, let me go and um maybe share with you where some of these materials are. And I wanted to point out one of the um concerns that had been raised in the public comment, which has to do with the availability of the software. Um, I just got word that the S three contract was finally signed this week. Uh, we've been hearing it'll be done in a week, done in a week, done in a week. Um, our approach to these first rounds of public hearings is to have you folks do your presentation upfront so that the public is aware of what redistricting is. Um, it is also to provide a timeline. And that a lot of these initial hearings is to get input from the various communities of interest in terms of where they believe they belong, kind of the kind of issues you've been hearing today. Um, the aim was to actually have the software available um midsummer with all the data sets and start issuing simultaneously workshops. Um, thinking was none of these official maps would be coming to you until the public hearings had taken place, that it would be in August, you would start receiving these maps. And then you'd re- have a series of other presentations of these various maps with Arc Bridge helping to guide you through that process, starting in late August through September and October, when you would then begin drawing your lines. So that's been the timeline we've been working against. Um, so just an FYI, because that had been raised earlier. Let me go to the website now. Can you all see the website? So a couple of things are here. I'm making a redistricting map. This has not been developed yet from the county. As soon as we have the S three software available, the data sets, the training, it would be uploaded there. Um, in terms of community outreach, actually, my, I have a little problem here in that my webpage, hold on here. My bar for my Zoom is blocking my pull down menu. So I may have to ask you, oh, there, I got in. Okay, so if you go to the public hearing one and you scroll down, what you will see here are several blocks across the page. Um, you can click here, and this will give you the information for the links to the virtual meetings. Right now, we are still thinking of um maintaining these these virtual formats through the end of July. And we are seeking sites that would be appropriate to have a combination of in-person and the ability to do the webinars. Um, there is a form for when we have the meetings that people can submit comments. We received some very helpful input from the People's Block and from the um Common Cause. Um, you saw the posting of the public written comment from the People's Block. And their suggestion was to include a couple of extra questions, which we have done. Um, basically, we wanted to keep it simple, and this would be similar when people come to a meeting. They would normally, if it was in person, fill out a card that they wanted to speak or could fill out whatever information they would wanted to provide. So this is basically provide your name, what zip code you're in, which of the public hearings you want to comment on. The, and these are the additional questions. Give your community a name. Tell us about your community. What are your shared interests? What brings you together? What is important to your community? And scrolling on down. Are there nearby areas you want to be um in a district with? Nearby areas you don't want to be in a district with? Why or why not? And you're already receiving some of those comments today from various speakers. Is there anything else you can tell us about your community? What other public comment would you like to make? And then the last one is, do you wish to make an oral comment? Um, that way they can either submit a written comment or they can um make a public comment as well. And then we ask if they want to receive our bulletins, they would sign up here. And we should probably make a couple of of um corrections on the website, obviously from comments today. We use the word newsletter. They're actually the bulletins that go out through Gov Delivery. They had been going out um with every regular meeting for since January, so that I know caused some confusion. Um, these additional questions we've added are consistent with what they're doing in the California CRC as well. Uh, Commissioner Stetcher. Your hand is up.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. My question was about, stop that. The difference between community and community of interest. And we don't have to have a long discussion, but I don't think community in that context captures quite the same idea as community of interest. I think it means, if I read that, I think that means Lakewood or Santa Monica, not where my people live. So I just want you to consider whether we could uh improve that bit of language.
Yeah, and that was one of the questions in the public comment, and I agree, we need to go back and revisit and look at that. And also there was a suggestion both in the public comments today and in the written ones, that there be a definition of what a community of interest be posted on our website. Um, the other thing that is here is the public outreach toolbox. And in this toolbox, you will see um that the fact sheet has been translated, the presentation, and I have to smile, and I apologize. We had these presentation slides put together for when you as commissioners go out as one or two commissioners to present. When you do that, there is a disclaimer slide that says you cannot receive comment at that point. It got translated and it's part of this packet. Obviously, when you have your public hearings, the sole reason you're doing it is to have a quorum and to receive public comment. But we have all of those, and then we have the flyers. Um, this has been a laborious process to get all these materials translated, but we now have the packets and we can start promoting to the various groups that these materials are available. Okay. Um, the other thing I wanted to show is over here is if you wanted to look up and find where your nearest um public hearing might be, and what you could do is you could type in your zip code. And it would show you where you would go. We also have added the language to make it very clear. You could go to any of the other ones that you might want. Again, we want to make it very, very easy for the public to find this. Um, if you scroll down, we have our map, and then also for each of the um various locations, we have the zip codes listed as well. Um, so those are the materials we've been working on in the last two weeks to get it ready for the next public hearing. It will be a work in progress. We will continue to receive comments from the public and how to make it stronger and how to improve it. Um, the other thing we have, and and this has been a question that's been asked about how to submit maps. When we go to, let me get to my pull down menu. My Zoom bar is blocking me. I don't know if I can do it, but if you go to the virtual public hearing, let's let me see if they'll let me move this bar up here. Let me try that. You know, when you go down here, we list the regular meetings, we list all the attachments. Um, Ty will be posting your public hearings and we'll be linking them to the various materials in terms of the handouts for the meetings. Okay, so that's sort of an overview of what we have built so far in terms of the public outreach, and as I said, it is a work in progress. Um, I'm gonna continue going through the rest of the presentation, just in the interest of time, unless there are any other questions. I don't see any. Okay, so the other thing I just wanted to talk a little bit about is what we're trying to develop right now in terms of a format. Your first public hearing is going to be on Monday. It's serving basically the Santa Clarita area. And so the thought would be that people would come, if it's in person, they'd fill out a card if they wanted to speak or provide input. In this case, we're gonna use the Google form that I just showed you. Um, we are working with some interactive maps um that we can also put up on the screen, so when people talk about geographic areas or whatever, we can enlarge it, so we have agreement that these are the geographic areas we're talking about. Um, and I don't know, Ty, do you wanna show any of the other links in terms of the map? And if so, I'll stop sharing.
Yeah, uh, I can show a few of the links as well. Um, so during the public hearings, uh commissioners, you have access to um this map as well, if you're interested in using it, especially if you are trying to facilitate a conversation um with uh members of the public related to uh the specific zones. Um, in this map, uh I will be able to support you as well. Uh, we can add different layers uh that you're interested in kind of seeing. So for example, um, let's say uh for this area, you may be interested in having a conversation about where zip codes may lie. Uh, for this area, you may be interested in having a conversation about where zip codes may lie uh in this area. Um, and then what we can do is then add an extra layer uh for the zip codes. Uh, so we can see where the zip codes lines lay. Uh, additionally, what we can do is add uh city and communities. Um, that has been uh determined most primarily incorporated cities versus unincorporated areas. Uh, but if we want to go a little bit more uh local, uh if we're, for example, interested in looking at neighborhoods. Then there's a layer for that as well. Uh, again, this is just a tool that uh you would have handy if you again want to have a uh discuss, a more visual discussion. Uh, with uh folks at the public hearings. Again, uh, just because there's a lot of data and information on it, it does take a second to load, but uh you can click on these different. Uh, units and see information about them as well.
All right, question information here. Are are you going to be doing this, having this on screen while a public commenter, a public? A member of the public is giving input?
Uh, not necessarily. It's totally up to all the commissioners and the co-chairs, uh how you all want to facilitate the public hearings. This is a tool that is available. For example, if you are going to have a conversation about uh specific neighborhoods or specific zip codes. And you are interested in just having a more visual conversation about where the zip codes are geographically located. We do have this tool available that we can share so that it. It's a little bit easier for uh members of the public to kind of visualize.
Wouldn't you be concerned that it's going to distract uh from the public speaker's testimony if you put this up without asking them?
And it, again, it's totally up to the commissioners and the co-chairs how you want to facilitate the conversation. Again, if it's like a, uh, this is just an available tool that you do not need to use. Uh, and does not need to be shared while uh members of the public is uh sharing their comment. Again, let's say, for example, uh, one member of the public may have a question about. Uh, specific areas in the zone, we can pull this up to uh examine it together.
Um. It's, is there to help bring clarification if people uh have some uncertainty about exactly what community are you talking about geographically?
So are we going to be taking questions from members of the public or or just, are we going to be taking questions from members of the public or just input?
We're going to be taking input. So the other thing I didn't really cover as well is when they come in, they'll fill out this. Google form, registration card. Um, the co-chairs and they may solicit some of you will do probably fifteen minute overview of what redistricting is. As part of the educational process. When that is happening, Ty will do some sorts, so we can sort of see where the comments cluster. So that if we see we had, like today, there was a comment about the western half of the San Fernando Valley. It might be good for you to hear those questions around that area. Or it may be another community of interest, which is why that form is there. So we're just showing, we have these maps available if people are talking about some area and they're not too sure where it is. That everybody can be on the same page in terms of what we're talking about. Um, I see Commissioner Wong's hand up.
Uh, yes, thank you, Gaila. Um, I just have a a couple of questions. So, uh, I guess related to this conversation. So are we um, are we allowed to respond to questions or is that just the co-chair to do? If if it's clarifying questions. And then, and then number two, I'm just curious about when we're looking at communities or neighborhoods. How did we choose the names for those or anyway, maybe we should explain because I don't want. The public to say, well, that's not my neighborhood, that's not what I call. But if we have some explanation of why we named it that way, I think it'll help us avoid some problems, that's it.
We could certainly add that clarification as you heard from um Nick uh from Regional Planning two weeks ago. Um, the cities have their names, there's great clarity with that. The unincorporated areas are where there may be differences in opinion, which is why that was a nice addition to the Google form. Um, and also to make sure we're not just talking about geographic areas, but also the broader communities of interest. Um, but again, we just wanted you to know this is a tool. Um, and again, we wanted to bring some order of how you receive the public comments, so you weren't jumping all over. In your mind in terms of the various communities.
But Commissioner Wong raised the question, uh, are we going to answer questions? Because some people will not just have a comment, but they'll ask us questions.
Let's have Holly weigh in.
I was gonna jump in on that. Um, typically, you're just taking input. Um, if there are some, you know, it's really up up to the chairs to determine whether, you know, somebody. Uh, we should answer a question and it might be, you know, if somebody said, oh, can you tell me where the where the next hearing is? Or if somebody said, um, can I come to the next hearing even if I don't live there? You know, that's one thing. Um, it's another, it's. Can you tell me how you intend to accommodate Santa Clarita in your future district? That's different when it gets into that, um, you know, uh, but generally you're taking input, you are not an answering questions.
Answering questions about the process is fine though, or the timeline. Okay. Um, so, you know, Santa Clarita will be um the first trial run of this. Um, there may not be need to have any maps. It may be useful to have it up if people are talking about some part of. That valley that you're not familiar with. Um, and again, you know, we have the form and we're going to give it a dry run and see how it goes.
Uh, I think to answer Commissioner Holtzman's question, we we're not going to routinely. Put up a map just as people start speaking it, but if they say, for instance, well, I'm not sure, you know, I have a question about the. Or uh, my comment is about some community, but I really helped me if I could see a map, okay, we'll, we could probably do that. Or if a commissioner says, you know, it would really help me if I could see a map while this person can, you know, discuss it.
It's just clarity.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll see. Well, I mean, we're, we're. This will be the first one, we'll see what happens.
The other thing I wanted to mention to all of you is to remind you about what Dr. Sunshine talked about. And that is you are going to have um some public comments that are very insightful, very well thought through. You may have some people who are not as focused, may say some outlandish things. Um, you may have some people who are abusive in terms of their comments. Um, he guided you that you were there to listen. He advised for the poker face, you know, to, you know, you're there to listen and not pass judgment at this point. Um, and so it may require a little bit of a thick skin. Although we've been very fortunate with all of our regular meetings, we've had very thoughtful. Public speakers up until this point, but when you go to the public hearings, it it can become quite different. Um, the other thing I wanted you to be aware of um is. I have been hearing that the various um parties and different groups are. Wanted to line up speakers to make a certain point. And so you may be hearing a lot of comments around the same thing. And again, the feeling is if we show the numbers, um, that will again reinforce whatever message they are saying. And keep in mind, you know, what are the source, you know, of the messages? Um, you did hear, um, I guess it was Steve Napolit- Napolitano who said, you know, in the past, sometimes. Um, politicians have paid people to actually go and make comment on their ba- behalf. I'm not saying that would happen in this round, but again, I just want to make sure you all are aware of the variety of the types of comments you may be getting. Um, and it'll be very important after we do this first one that we do a debriefing. So we can continually figure out how to make it better and stronger. Okay. Um, so basically, welcome them, help them fill out the card, then go through the slideshow to explain what it's all about. Um, then look at, do we have large groupings of people from the same community of interest or geographic area? And have those groups present first and then work our way through the list of the people who submitted. If you'd rather have them do it randomly. And or just in the order that we receive the cards, we can do it in some other way. But it just seemed like it might help to digest the patterns of comments if they were somehow clustered around some themes.
I think that would also uh increase the chances of people saying, okay, well, that that was essentially my comment about that region, so. I'll just stick with my written comment, which will be helpful.
The co-chairs also have the ability, um, we're going to assume two minutes for public comment. The co-chairs have the ability, though, if it's a large turnout, to save one minute. So again, you know, if we're under fifty, it might be fine for the two minutes, but if it goes much higher. The coaches have that prerogative. Um, Holly, are there any other points that I I've missed?
Uh, no, really just that you you listen, um, you typically, there's no engagement. Back and forth with um during public comment. And um, you know, I think uh in terms of critiques from the public. That those will, you probably will get more of those the later in the process this goes as as draft maps come out. Um, and um, just remember it's sort of a hallmark of our democracy that people get to stand up and criticize their government. So Gaila's comment about developing a thick skin, if you don't already have one, is is good.
Yeah. Um, we have um a number of comments also on the Q QA. Um, which I think we should probably take before we move on to the next agenda item. We also had um Chris Rowe in particular has provided some additional information that. Um, has been useful background reading. Um, Ty, do you want to look at the Q and A and see?
As as Ty's doing that, uh, I've been asked to remind the public that the initial public hearings, uh, the ones in June and July. Will be virtual, virtual only. Um, and you are, uh, even though there's, they're designated per region. Uh, you can attend any of those and provide input into any geographical area you wish. Uh, provide information about communities of interest as you desire at any of those hearings. Um, in August, we're looking for uh locations in which to hold um hybrid hearings. Uh, in person, but with an online, uh optional online component as well. Uh, but we do not yet have those locations set up, but that's the hope for August.
Yeah. Um, I noticed there's a couple of comments about concern about putting people at risk within person meetings. So we will take every precaution and we will be following what our public health guidelines are from the county of Los Angeles. And it's also one reason why we're waiting to at least August. Uh, we will continue to always have this virtual model. Um, and we're gonna just take it one step at a time.
If 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 I could jump in on that, um. Our continued ability to use a virtual model will um will depend in part on um the governor's extension. Um, as it relates to the Brown Act. Um, at some point, if that does get lifted, however, um, we will not be able to have virtual meetings any longer. Um, if it, if that gets, if it gets rolled back to pre-COVID status. So I, I just want to caution that there may come a time, it may, it may, it may not happen. Uh, this year, but it's po- it's possible, but you know, come October. Or or December, November, December, there may be a point where um we can no longer have the virtual meetings.
So I think before we take more commissioner questions, we should check the um public comment box, if you could wait, Commissioner Holtzman.
Do we do have a few comments from the same individual? Uh, Co-Chair Maeda, would you like me to just read through them or how would you like me to proceed?
Uh, I.
Go ahead, Holly.
Sorry, I had a fly here. Um, but I do have a comment. Um, my suggestion is, um, you just, I I don't. Our practice usually is you look in the Q and A to see if someone has said they want to comment on this agenda item. And you can have them comment on this agenda item. I'd hesitate to have you just read the 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 string of comments. If someone has a public comment on this specific agenda item, you can call on them.
Uh, I agree with that.
So um, based off of that, there are no uh members of the public that have indicated that they would like to make a public comment for this agenda item.
Okay, uh, public comment then is closed for this agenda item, Commissioner Holtzman.
Um, like, it's a, just this comment, really not a question. Uh, the the first thing is, um. I understand that we're allowed to just to keep doing in all virtual meetings, but I kind of thought that we were looking towards. Doing in-person meetings uh as soon as we were allowed to do those and could set them up. So I was thinking that maybe it would be appropriate to start doing them a little earlier, but uh, you know, I like to virtually best. The other piece of my comment is, um, it's my opinion. That we cannot count an all virtual meeting. As one of the official five in district meetings, the hearings that we're supposed to hold under the law. That's because I think the intent of the law is partly to get the commissioners into the district, to to see the district. And for uh people in the district to see us.
So I'd like, I'd like Holly to answer that that the second question. The first question, problem, Commissioner Holtzman, is that. Facilities, we would need to find, and Gaila has been working very hard to try to find facilities. That are large enough so that we can have fourteen or up to fourteen commissioners, six feet apart, masked. On a dais with staff as well and that there's not that many facilities that would allow that kind of. That would, that are open for us for that, for that purpose, but we are.
I did find a county facility called Charles S. Farnsworth Park, that's in my supervisory district, fairly centrally located, so. Well, just mark that down as a suggestion.
Look, you don't know about that.
Well.
Okay, Holly.
Um, yes, that that particular statute does talk about, um, and it was um adopted specifically for the. Uh, the co- after the COVID regulations went out, um, saying that. Uh, to the greatest extent practicable, um, we should work to have one in-person meeting in each district. Um, uh, this challenge we have is the one that uh, Co-Chair Maeda and 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 Gaila also just kind of weighed in on. Is the the ability to find uh the facilities in each district that can allow us to continue to comply with. Um, the public health and safety regulations and have the space to do it. So um, I I know that it this, it isn't just a disregard. We certainly are not um disregarding that. I think actually, um, Gaila is working hard to try to find those facilities. Um, and line, line those up for when we can do that, when it is practicable to do that. So um, uh, I, we do have the ability to continue this virtual thing until we. Until the practicalities are such that we can get out to the districts. Um, I would also add too, I think that, you know, part of the purpose or goal of that. Um, was also to make it so that people in those areas did not have to travel to downtown LA. Uh, to make comments. And so um with that as part of the goal, certainly, um, the virtual meeting format. Um, uh, meets that goal. So it's, it's a balancing act and I think we are um, legally solid ground um as we move forward.
And with that, um, Co-Chair Maeda, I would suggest we go on to the next agenda items because we have a full meeting.
I agree. Um, okay, the next item is updates on ad hoc working groups first, uh, I'll call on the lead of. Greg Byrne?
There was this little hierarchy I was going to go over, but we'll do it some other time. This.
Oh.
Another time.
Okay, um, all right, um, uh, call on Commissioner Mendoza, the lead of the education working group for uh an update.
Thank you. Thank you, Co-Chair Maeda. We continue to seek and secure uh speakers. Um, and we uh are encouraging uh all of you commissioners to provide ideas to myself and John. Uh, on things that you would like to hear about, learn about. And right now, uh, there is this, some discussion about what to bring up next, but we don't have anybody secured uh quite yet. So uh, stay tuned.
And I do want to commend the education working group for a tremendous job bringing. And I do want to commend the education working group for tremendous job bringing to us experts who have really, I think, been helpful to educating the commission and understanding what our, so we can understand what our role is and how to how to carry it out.
Exactly. Thank you.
Co-chair Williams.
Thank you, Co-chair Maeda. Now we will have an update from the Democracy Ad Hoc Working Group from the colleagues, Commissioner Stetcher and Commissioner Vento.
Before, before we use that, Co-chair Williams, I just do want to mention that we don't have any public comments for that last agenda item.
Okay, thank you. And so Commissioners Stetcher and Vento, any updates?
Could I ask, should we just take that slide off the screen so I could see more people? Unless it's needed. Thank you.
Commissioner Vento and I did not coordinate before this meeting, and I believe we have nothing new to say at this time. We'll have the first meeting of a new, a meeting a week from today of the working group to talk more about the agendas for the next few weeks. Anything else to add, John? Commissioner Vento?
No, we're just getting everything started. So looking forward to this, working with this group.
Well, I will mention that the co-chairs and Arc Bridge will be meeting with Internal Services Department next week, which will be an important launch of Arc Bridge, getting the software and ESRI and all of that. And again, this group is sort of being reconstituted now that they're two co-chairs and they've put together the calendar for their meetings.
And again, thank you to Commissioners Stetcher and Vento for taking on co-chairing this important, really important group for us. So, Co-chair Maeda.
Is there, are there public comments on this?
There are no public comments for item sixty, little i, little i.
Next, the lead of the legislation and updates on other redistricting commissions, Commissioner Holtzman.
Thank you, Co-chair Maeda. I'm going to first talk about the California Citizens Redistricting Commission. Because it's going to be doing similar things to what we're going to be doing, these public outreach meetings, whatever you call them. The state commission is calling them, what it's going to be doing, Communities of Interest Public Input Meetings. So that's the title of each one, Community of Interest Public Input Meeting. And, you know, like ours, all but one of those sessions is going to be intended for specific outreach zones. And some of theirs will include assistance for specific languages. So that's similar to what we're doing. My ad hoc are discussed, though, whether or not we 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 came to the conclusion, we would like feedback from the commission on whether or not to include Communities of Interest Public Input in the title of our upcoming meetings. And this sort of tracks what one of the, well, the written public comment that we got today, it was a major request that we make it more clear what we're looking for at at these meetings. So we would like your feedback on including Communities of Interest Public Input in the title of our upcoming meetings, and we think that would help members of the public easily see what type of input we are looking for when they're considering whether to participate. Another interesting thing about the state commission meetings is that they're only going to be taking their community of interest input via telephone, just telephone during their upcoming sessions. And people can sign up for telephone time slots, listen to the hearing on the phone. I imagine it'll be live streamed with the minister's faces online, but interesting. So as I can say, you can sign up for a slight time slot, or if you want to wait and not identify yourself, there'll be a general open lines period at the end of each session. All right, so our ad hoc decided that Commissioner Kenny, thank you to the new commissioner, I'm the ad hoc, will be taking point on monitoring the state commission. And Commissioner Stetcher will be taking point on monitoring the Santa Barbara County Commission. I'll continue monitoring the San Diego County Commission as well as the Michigan one. And I might look at a couple of the other independent state redistricting commissions. Going forward, we're going to start putting together files containing just the agendas of those independent commissions, you know, like agenda after agenda after agenda. So if you want to look at those files, you can get an idea of what those commissions are doing, where they are in the redistricting process. Now, let's get to San Diego. San Diego has stationary. And there it is. This is a report from one of the ad hoc committees, and note that it shows the the full title of the commission on top, and everybody's name is listed over here. Anyway, it's very nice, and I just thought it might be something we might want to do while we're considering, while we're doing our business cards, as you know, we're doing, we're doing our business cards. All right, so that's that. Now, San Diego's provided a bit of frustration here because, you know, we're supposed to be working together on coming up with amendments to that bill that could help us get more time. Well, I've pinged San Diego several times to get this amendment language with their ad hoc approved, but they keep telling me, as soon as we get the official copy that went out to the legislature, we'll we'll share it. So we don't have that to report. I can't report the San Diego suggested amendment language. In the meantime, though, I might draft a letter for our commission to approve, but I don't have one of those for tonight. One other point that the ad hoc asked me to raise is that we would like, once we have a position on this bill, the outreach to legislatures, to legislators, to not come just from members of the ad hoc here, but from the whole commission. So a request to all of you, when you get a chance, please send me the names of your state senators and assembly members, just, you know, email or whatever. And also of other state legislators, if they might know you, so we can start arranging for that outreach. We would want to contact the representatives of represent LA County. And I've come to the bottom of my list. Thank you for your attention. If there are any comments or questions? Go ahead.
The only comment I would make is it may be useful to have agendas of other commissions, but also useful would be if there are best practices, if there's something that somebody is doing other than us that we might profitably, you know, incorporate, then please bring those to us at appropriate intervals.
Yeah, and that's why I mentioned including Communities of Interest Public Meeting, Communities of Interest Input in the, in the titles of our hearings.
Any public comment on this?
No, there are no public comments for this item.
I just have an additional question, which was whether we were going to ask the county clerk in Los Angeles whether they had a date by which they absolutely had to have the new maps done in order to get the next election up and running. Were you going to raise that, Commissioner Holtzman, or?
I but didn't put it on my list, but I remember we did discuss that. I'm not sure the best way to go about that, perhaps, well, our co-chairs could approach Dean Logan, the county registrar, or maybe our ad hoc could put together.
Or maybe Gaila could contact the county.
To the registrar recorder and see if I can get a response on that.
Great, thank you.
Again.
They pretty much said December fifteenth, but let me reach out again.
Yeah, again, we don't have to, you know, go along with what he says, but it'd just be harder, easier to get something passed if he agrees with.
Any comments or questions from the, any of the commissioners? Great, the, I was alerted to the fact that we actually skipped something that was on the agenda, which is Co-chair Williams, I don't know if you want to invite the lead of the Public Outreach group to, working group to address us if he has any updates.
Thank you. I know Gaila provided an overview of the public hearings, but Commissioner Morales, do you have an update for the Public Outreach Working Group?
Yeah, so Gaila covered everything, but I would encourage everybody out there, the hearings are coming up, invite your friends and family and everyone to join us. And so the more input we get, the more informed we'll be. That's my public service announcement there.
Thank you.
I do think there was one issue that the working group is going to be tasked to try to sort out, which is the potential conflict on the date of our scheduled Spanish language public hearing conflicting with two L.A. City redistricting hearings.
That is correct. So we'll be trying to work, we're going to have to check in on that to figure out what the best course of action is going to be. So the, this L.A. City is looking into that same date and approximately the same time, so we just have to figure that.
It's the August seventh one, and at 5:30 tonight, I got input that some folks are going to make public comment to L.A. City that they should change since theirs is tentative and ours wasn't aligned with the California and issued earlier. So they also suggested that I contact L.A. City Executive Director, which I did by email prior to the meeting. Although he probably was busy getting ready for the meeting. So we'll wait and see if they can make an adjustment. If not, we'll see what we need to do.
Right.
Right, thank you.
And I'll bring it up with the ad hoc working group.
Great. Since there's no update, do we have any public comments?
Co-chair Williams, we do have a hand from Chris Rowe. I'm not sure, just because of the mix up with the agenda, how you would like to proceed with this.
It's a public comment.
Raise hand.
Yeah. Okay, yeah.
So Chris Rowe, you'll be prompted by Zoom to unmute, and once you begin speaking, you will have two minutes to make your public comment.
Hi, thank you so much. And yes, I am putting a lot in your Q and A's comments. My concern is that we have people who have already declared for running for L.A. County when we don't know what the districts, they're, they're basing their, you know, the fact that that my supervisor, Supervisor Kewell, is, I guess, termed out. That seat is vacant, so people are declaring for that seat. And yet, we don't know what your decision's going to be, what those boundaries are in the future. So that's a concern for me, that you were talking about the date that you need to get this to the Dean Logan, for example, and and I I just want to know if there's some way when you're you're putting out your messages or whatever, that you kind of warn or urge people not to declare candidacy because they don't know if they'll be actually seated in the community that that will be drawn by you. So thank you for your time.
There are no other public comments for this item.
Thank you, Ty, and thank you for that comment. Okay, so we, I think we've already covered your information. Is anything else?
I think just future agenda items.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so there are no future agenda items at this time.
I have no executive director report.
You need to executive close session.
So yes, before we go into closed session, we just basically announced that we'll be going into closed session under Government Code Section 54956.9D2, the subdivision that applies to anticipated litigation, where a point has been reached in the opinion of the commission on the advice of legal counsel. Based on existing facts and circumstances, there's a significant exposure to litigation against the commission. And we will not be coming back into the public meeting after this. We will be making any announcements regarding any action that was taken in closed session at our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be Wednesday, June 23. So we will have an agenda item there to report out from the closed session. And so with that, I think we can adjourn into closed session, and Gaila may have some specific reminders of how we're going to do that.
So everyone should have received a separate link. I believe the co-chairs should adjourn this meeting, and we will reconvene in our new Zoom room link.
Can we take five minutes before the next?
I have that we'll be adjourned at nine twenty-six. And why don't we come back at nine thirty-five? Does that work for everyone?
Sure.
Yes.
We stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.